It would probably be Eunice. Okay, hit record. Yeah, it's.
You're good.
Oh, Aaron's making it. Okay. Okay, cool. Alright, we are live.
Okay, it's 401 here on Friday afternoon, November 20th. I'd like to call this special council meeting the guy in council order here. It had been asked for by the mayor and first we'll have the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
It's America.
The Republic.
Public. Existence.
One nation. Under God. Indivisible. Liberty. Justice for all.
Thank you. Hold the silence. Okay, roll call council members.
Mr. Baldinger.
Here.
Mr. Botkins.
Here.
Ms. Earlston.
Here.
Dr. Felner.
Here.
Mr. Ivy.
Here.
Mr. Richard.
Here.
Mr. Triplett.
Here.
Let me know that all seven council members are present for the special meeting. We need to add.
We need to do the other, the elected officials.
Do we do a special meeting to them?
Yeah, normally I have it on here. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, roll call of elected officials, safety service director.
Mayor Larry.
Here.
Auditor Trish. Director of Law Palmer.
Here.
Treasurer Sparks. Safety Service Director Ward. We're good.
Okay.
That's it. Now that noise is at my house. It'll get, it'll get quiet just a minute here.
Okay. I'd rather be at your house, Mayor, than dogs at my house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They start barking, we're in trouble.
Okay, we need to add ordinance 2020 day 77 to the agenda. Says it did not go through committee. They hear a motion to add that.
I make a motion to add ordinance 2020 dash 77 to the agenda.
Dr. Felner made the motion to add it. Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Triplett seconded. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
What's the question, please?
Um, we're adding 20, 2020 dash 77 to the agenda. Whether you approve?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2020 day 77 has been added to the agenda by a seven oh vote and in a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead.
You, Mark.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion by Mr. Triplett to approve the agenda as amended, seconded by.
Second that.
Dr. Felner. If they were to say aye.
Aye.
opposed likewise, the agenda has been amended. Moving on to legislation versus ordinance 2020 day 75 is reading.
Okay. Hold on. Ordinance number 2020 dash 75 entitled ordinance amending ordinance number 2019 dash 85 permanent 2020 appropriations by transferring and appropriating funds in various funds and declaring an emergency.
Okay, discussion on this ordinance? Let's take it there.
Yeah, Carl, this is Gail.
Yeah.
Now, this ordinance come through Finance Committee and was moved on. As my understanding, we have some number changes in this ordinance since, since it went through Finance. So I'd like to make a motion to amend these numbers in section three to seventeen thousand eighty-three dollars and eighteen cents. And in section four, the, the number needs to be four hundred and forty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty-six and sixty cents. We had to make a, they had to make an adjustment here and I'm sure that'll be explained by probably Eunice later on here. So I'd like to make that before we finish the discussion on this ordinance.
Okay, you heard the motion. Do we have a second? Mrs. Earlston seconded it?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, roll call.
Okay, Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
The motion passed seven to zero. Now discussion? Gail, you want to take this?
I, I have a question about the numbers. Um, did you, you were saying in section three and four?
Yes, three and four. Of the twenty day, twenty twenty day seventy-five.
Oh, seventy-five. Okay, I've, I've got the wrong, I'm looking at twenty twenty dash seventy-seven.
Oh.
Yeah, we had a change in numbers. It was twenty-five thousand and some change, I believe, and then the other one was four forty-one and some change. And now Eunice will explain the change here in a minute.
Oh.
Okay, further discussion?
Did, did you want me to explain the change now on those, since they're voting to change those?
Why don't you go ahead?
Okay, so the reason, sorry Julie.
That's okay. They already have voted, but that's okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, so the, the change in both of them, to get the money appropriated as accurately as possible and trying to rough guess the utility refunds and everything else, we needed to change those amounts. And if you do the math between the numbers and the changes, you're going to see that the total number did change. By, I want to say it was like six hundred eleven dollars and some change, but that was due to some interest that was not calculated in the first appropriation, the first draft. So this just kind of more accurately gives a breakdown of where we think the COVID money will be spent and gives us enough money for the utility refunds being out of the contractual services. And then they got some additional quotes and stuff for some of the materials and supplies that we can use the COVID money on. So we have to make those adjustments and that's the reason for the change in the dollar figures, just because we got a little bit closer on our numbers.
Okay, any questions on these changes? Besides what she explained? Okay, moving on, other questions?
Well, we probably go through the whole, we haven't went through the whole ordinance yet, yeah.
So you want me to go ahead and do that?
Yeah.
Okay, so starting with section two, that is for a chip agreement for a rehab project. This will be one rehab that will be done. This is appropriating funds that has been in the chip fund for quite some time. And there is still some funds left in there, but this is an appropriation to cover the one rehab project that has been done. Also then, again, section three and four is for the COVID relief funds that I think we've pretty much talked about. If anybody has questions, I'll entertain those at the end. Section five and six are regarding payroll to get us enough payroll to get through the rest of the year. This is both for the recreation fund at the parks. Section seven is to appropriate additional funds to cover the income tax collection. The rest of these are all just going to be transfers, so it won't be new money. It's going to be transferring funds that are already appropriated. So for section eight, this is moving some of the victim advocate funding out of contractual services and into materials and supplies. He only had fifty dollars in there and needs to get some things to be able to do year end and run reports such as toner for the ink or for the printer, ink cartridges and things like that. So we just want to move some of those funds down from contractual services. Section nine and 10 is for the health department. This is moving funds around for the grants that they, that are separate from the CARES Act. I want to make that clear that theirs are separate. So this is transferring some money for them to be able to get a server and things like that moved around so that things are being paid from the right lines. In the past, I think I'm getting ahead of myself. I'm going to stop there on those. Section 11 is for some software equipment at our water treatment plant. This is through SCADA. It gives us some remote monitoring capabilities for the plant. Section 12 and 13 is for payroll items as well. We're moving money up from insurance. Those had extra funds in them due to insurance was, budget was in place before we had made a decision on insurance. Several employees opted to waive coverage and get the buyout, so it left us with extra money in there because their wave buyout is from a different line. Section 14 and 15 are also, and 16 are all payroll related. These are all funds from where the service department works in different fund areas and we have to split it out. So this is covering like the hospitalization, the PERS benefits as well as wages through those sections. And then section 17 is for the health department where we are moving funds down into their capital line for the server. Now that they are audited separately, they do, when we, they have the gap report done at the end of the year, they capitalize the higher expenditures that are capital purchases. And so this sets up the five-two-five for them and moves the money for the server down into the capital projects.
Hey, questions?
I have one about the CARES money.
Yes.
Um, so which two were the, was those, again, I'm just scrolling through here.
Section three and four.
Okay, and so, um, I'm assuming the one is for utilities?
It is, it's, it's going to be a combination. So section three is materials and supplies. So that would be like items that we're purchasing, whether it's masks, cleaners, static foggers, anything like that, that's actual purchase of supplies. Section four then is the contractual services. So that's going to be, the only two that we have there is the reimbursements, which that would be the utility refund. We also use that for, the reimbursements are used for a lot of things. I used it for any purchases that we made prior to receiving the money. We also use this for the payroll adjustments that we do. And there is an other technical services line budget in, in there as well, so we can move the money between the reimbursement and other technical services because they're both five-two-three account numbers, account numbers that end in five-two-three.
Okay, and then in the next ordinance, there's, there's more of that CARES Act that we're going to be discussing as well, correct?
That'll be, we'll go over that. It's a, it's a little different, but it comes from that reimbursement line that I was just talking about, yes.
Okay, so I'm just trying to see if we were able to use, utilize, utilize all of that since we are looking at a deadline here.
Well, we will, with, with everything in total that we are doing tonight, it will enable us to encumber all of those funds to be used.
Okay.
So that we don't have to return it. That's part of what all of this is. It's just kind of in three different steps.
Okay, that's what I was kind of getting at. So, alright, thank you.
I have a question, Carl. I guess this would be for the mayor on the SCADA forty thousand. Just for software, what about the equipment to run the software?
I think this, I don't even know why it's in the software. I think this is, as I understand it, Mark, is to enable the water plant and the towers to operationalize it, so.
If, if I may clarify, I have the quote here in my hand. It's, this isn't in software. It's five-two-five, which is a capital, so it's furniture and equipment. It does have software and the equipment in it, but this is kind of, again, kind of like with the health department with the server. We need to capitalize it in our gap report. So that's why we're moving it from the maintenance and repair down into the furniture and equipment being five-two-five-oh-two so that it's a capital purchase. And, and this is from the guidance of the State Auditor's Office.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Carl, I have a question, please.
Go ahead.
This might be for the mayor, Nikki or Matt. Do we have a tally yet on how many of the COVID utility relief hundred dollar credits applications we've received so far?
Yeah, I'll jump in there. I, I, I'm disappointed to say less than a thousand. So I think it's well known. I can't explain all the reasons why people haven't applied yet. I'm still expecting kind of a last minute rush, but at this point, you know, we, we had expected five thousand of our six thousand customers and we're, I think, in the neighborhood of seven or eight hundred. So that, that, the, that's part of the other legislation today to give us some flexibility to utilize that that pool of funds for a couple of other areas.
I've got a question on Facebook. Oh, sorry. I've got a question on Facebook. It's from Christie and it was mentioned about the payroll adjustments. And her comment was payroll adjustments, question mark, who gets a raise out of COVID money? It just needs to be explained what those payroll adjustments are. So I guess people don't think we're getting raises out of that.
Sure, no, no one's getting raises. This is for extra expenditures that we've had due to COVID. Whether with the family first leave act through COVID, it enables us to use some of that money to cover if someone has to be quarantined or off work. We would also be able to use that money to cover overtime. If there was overtime to cover for someone being off, it also allows us, like for anybody that filed unemployment, to cover things. It's, there's a lot of things within the CARES Act and the guidelines that allow us to do that.
That's, it's, I think, I'll try, it, nobody's getting a raise out of this. This allows us to use those CARES Act dollars to offset the general fund dollars that have already gone to the sick leave or to the overtime that's been incurred. It just puts that money back in the general fund.
Not just, not just general fund, any fund that it came from.
Any of the utility funds. We've had, oh, a handful of, of city employees that in the general fund. So that's why I said that. There are a few. In fact, we've had more incidents of COVID within our employee group the last three weeks than we did the first eight or nine months. But it really is to offset those expenses that we've had paying for sick leave. That is, that we can't charge their sick leave when they're off on COVID leave. So this enables us to pay that sick leave and keeps that employee's sick leave bank intact. The other costs are those, they're really not a lot of overtime. It's more or less calling people in when some of the, some of the, the departments have had people off. So that's really what that, that money is, is for. It's, it's pretty clearly one of the things Congress had in mind when they passed the legislation.
Okay, anything else?
Um, I'd like to, if there are no other questions or comments, I'd like to make a motion to move ordinance 2020 dash seventy-five and suspend the rules on to the final reading.
Read the motion, but actually, I want to suspend the rules in this ordinance, seconded by Mrs. Earlston. Roll call.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 2020 day seventy-five has been approved by seven oh vote. Now discussion on the ordinance. Mr. Triplett?
I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2020 day seventy-two.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, alright.
Mr. Triplett seconded by Mr. Ivy. Roll call.
Mr. Trip.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
It passed by, ordinance passed by seven oh vote. Moving on to ordinance 2020 dash seventy-six is the first. So.
Alright, ordinance number 2020 dash seventy-six entitled ordinance amending ordinance number 2019 dash eighty-five permanent 2020 appropriations by transferring and appropriating funds in various funds as part of reimbursements for wages with COVID relief funds and declaring an emergency.
Okay, discuss. Gail?
Carl, this also came through Finance Committee, these appropriations and moved on to full council for consideration tonight. I'm going to turn it over to Eunice for an explanation of that ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sharing now.
Okay. Um, this entire ordinance is in connection with the FFCRA, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. I would request that this be passed as an emergency tonight as well. I can go through each line if needed, or if anybody has any questions on a specific section, I would be happy to address them. But they are basically the same for each one. Like when you get into the groups by account, the first one transfers the funds from two-six-seven to whichever account we are hitting, whether it be one oh one or six oh three, six oh one, six oh five, etc. So the first one would appropriate that money into the cash and that are transferred into the cash and then the other one appropriates them by line as to where they're needed. So that's basically it in a nutshell. This is a payroll item that we're using to use up some of the funds for payroll, as the mayor had just explained on the last one. The total of these is just under eight thousand dollars. I don't have the exact total in front of me, I think.
Okay, questions?
This is, Eunice, if I could just sort of paraphrase, um, this is an accounting that's necessary because of the source of the, the funds. It's COVID relief funds, they have to be accounted. We can't just dump it into the, the pooled money and pay out. We have to be specific with where that money is being received and going to.
Right, so, so in our office, on the other end, we have even more supporting documentation for the figures that we're using, but yes, that is correct with the grant money to show the, the flow of it, to document that this is necessary.
And just as a personal aside, the, the accounting required, if you're running a small business and you're paying sick leave or you, you know, if you want to get a tax credit, it adds another layer of accountability and, and proof, if you will, that you're using the money appropriately and, but it is, it, it's more paperwork, but you know, that's what we have to do, so.
Correct, and I, I do want to add one more thing really quick. I, I did say it at Finance Wednesday evening, but I just want to say again, these last two pieces were quite a challenge to put together and it was definitely a group effort with myself and April Ammons in the office and Julie Bell, of course, and I really appreciated their help and everybody pitching in and helping out and getting these put together, so.
That's good to hear, thanks.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If there's no further questions, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move ordinance 2020 dash seventy-six on to full council for a final vote.
You've heard the motion by Mr. Ivy. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Baldinger seconded. Roll call.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Ms. Earlston?
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
A motion to, to suspend the rules passed by seven oh vote. Now discussion on the ordinance? Any further discussion, Mr. Triplett?
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2020 day, so I don't have it.
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Ivy, motion made by Mr. Triplett. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Also passed by a seven oh vote. Next one, the last one is ordinance 2020 dash seventy-seven, the first reading.
Ordinance number 2020 dash seventy-seven entitled ordinance encumbering direct costs associated with the CARES Act grant funds and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Discussion on this ordinance? Through committee, what, Eunice?
So in connection, again, with being compliant with the requirements of the CARES Act, we have to have the funds encumbered. So with these direct costs that are listed in section two and three, normally when we encumber funds, they're put onto a purchase order. Since these are direct funds, we are not, we would not do a purchase order for these costs. So what we have done with the guidance and direction of our law director, Mr. Palmer, we have estimated as best we can, the different categories being whether it's contract services or materials and supplies again, and, and we want to encumber those funds or earmark them for those expenses so that we're in compliance with the grant. So under section three, the majority of, or that is basically earmarked for the utility refunds. And then section two is earmarked for payroll expenses and items. I do want to note, and I will let the law director chime in if there's anything additional he wants to note, but I just, I do want to point out section four that we are requesting that if there are any unexpended costs from these encumbrances that we can reallocate them to cover other expenses, provided they're in compliance with the CARES Act grant. This way, if we don't get that many utility refunds, we can use those dollars towards something else that's in compliance with the grant, or I don't know if the mayor has anything else he wants to add.
Mayor?
Uh, I'm, no, I, I really think that covers it. I would imagine that there are two other, there are two other areas that we're looking at if the utilities don't utilize all those funds. And they have to do with relief that we can provide to five oh one charities relief that could go to families that have experienced hardship. So in that regard, there may be, like we're doing with the Thanksgiving turkey money, four or five local churches that, that we may make a decision to get them money and then the other most obvious, if you will, use would be to provide some money to businesses. So we're going to allow the utility credit program to run its course and then be in a position to redeploy to either one of those CARES Act authorized uses.
Thomas, you have anything to add to that? No?
I don't know if you heard.
I don't know if you heard.
Are you muted?
He's muted now.
Anything you had, like to add, Thomas?
I think I'm, Julie, can you unmute me?
You're unmuted now.
Oh, you sure?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, uh, no, I do not. Uh, what we have discovered is that there's a deadline of today, in fact, to encumber monies, uh, that, then in turn would need to be expended before the end of the year. Um, unused money, or unencumbered money, if you will, would have to be returned to the county level and then redistributed. We don't want to have to do that, so that's the reason for this, is to allow us to encumber it. Uh, and again, the same restrictions would apply in terms of the ability you use the CARES money for specific purposes, uh, as before.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion?
I mean, man, go ahead, Gail, please.
This may be for Eunice, um, these numbers here, I'm assuming we're talking about the same CARES dollars that we were talking about in seventy-five in ordinance number seventy-five. Um, the fact that we had to change those numbers, does that have any effect on what numbers we're seeing here in this ordinance?
Um, I'm, I'm gonna assume that you're asking that they don't balance. The reason they don't balance or don't total the same is because we do have some that will be encumbered on purchase orders. So these costs in number seventy-seven are only direct costs that we would not do a purchase order for. So if we're already looking to commit to buy something from a vendor, those, those funds would be encumbered on a purchase order.
Okay, yeah, I was just, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't missing, uh, some corrections.
Sure.
Maybe needed here, so, so thanks for the explanation.
Absolutely.
Um, Brian just commented that he's, uh, on, on the live, that he's sorry that he is not here. So he just, did just join us and is listening.
Okay, anything else?
President? Mr. President?
Yes.
There's no further questions, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance twenty twenty dash seventy-seven and move to a final vote.
By Mr. Ivy, second by Mrs. Earleston.
Tammy has a question, I think.
Tammy, yeah.
I need to do my arms more.
Yeah, okay.
I just, I think you already answered this, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, but I just kinda wanted to reiterate that.
Uh, ju- just a second here, we got a motion on the floor, I think we either have
There you go.
We have to have a second or can't have a discussion in the middle of the motion, so, do I have a?
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Richard, second the motion, uh.
Alright, Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Sorry, yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Us.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston. Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules passed by seven oh vote now, Mrs. Earleston?
Sorry, um, no, just I wanted to, uh, make sure and clarify that I understood correctly that, um, this money could possibly be, um, also used to help small businesses in the community.
Yeah, yes, Tammy, I think it's almost a certainty. Uh, as I said before, when Aaron asked the question about how many utility credits, and for whatever reason or sets of reasons, there have been, uh, in my, thousands less, uh, folks, so I think there'll be, um, uh, there's gonna be some money available for, uh, dispersal, uh, for business grants.
Thank you. Other, other questions, discussion, Tammy?
Um, I think that, well, um, I know, uh, the health department was dealing with some COVID money as well in a timeframe. I don't know if this kind of falls under the same thing, but, um, will, will they be able to do this as well, like what we're doing now to get it appropriated before the time runs out?
I think they're, I think their health board is working to get in a position to spend, they got another really significant chunk of money, uh, and so they're working on that. I believe that their health department, or excuse me, the health board's gonna, um, be responsible for that.
I, I have been working with the health department, I have not gotten any figures from them yet as to where or how the funds are going to be expended. So I'm waiting on that. They did have a special meeting Wednesday night as well that I attended, so I'm just waiting on information from them.
I think, if I may, I'm is making it up, Tammy, but I think they're working off a different set of deadlines. That, the money they got, I believe, was either FEMA or Ohio Department of Health money. It didn't come from the local government part of the CARES Act, as I understand it. But I could be off on that. Our money flowed from the county auditor. If we don't do this encumbering, which we're gonna do here in a second, then it'll flow back to the county auditor for, for, uh, redispersion. I don't believe the health department's money is subject to that reclaim and redistribution.
Trish, you want to add anything to this?
So what, the, the little bit that we know, because we didn't get a whole lot of guidance, other than it, they're lumping it together with some of our other funds, uh, and it's reimbursement based, so we have to have it to, to, uh, spend it. But I actually just got the contract today, uh, from Crawford County, because the money is filtered through them, much like our other grants for COVID. Uh, because the state's only doing one point of contact for each county for these funds, um, like they have for all of the COVID dollars. Uh, these are a, a strand of CARES Act funding, we're limited, um, and because of the city's budget structure, how everything happens, we're on an extremely tight timeframe. Now that we've finally got the contract and we have some of the figures, we've been trying to run figures, uh, in terms of what kind of personnel costs we can backtrack and, and, and write off to this and such, but there are some figures that, uh, we're trying to finalize. We've got a couple quotes and stuff like that that we're waiting on to be able to figure out exactly where we'll be able to spend. But the problem is, is that we're going to have to, once we have all those figures, we have to send it to you all, because there's gonna have to be funds appropriated, because we just don't have any more money to pull from in our budget to recoup here or there. So it would have to be allocated in order, and then, then we would have to go through all the other processes, you know, purchase orders and, uh, then ordering, and with the timeframe that I, Eunice, correct me, I, I, or remind me, I believe it's December fourth, everything has to be in by. So we only have literally, for, you know, a couple days essentially, you know, when we look at, you know, days that people are out on the holidays and, and that type of stuff, I, I mean, but, yeah, we, we are very, very much crunched for time, and I wish we would have had figures and more, more distinct lines of what we can and can't do prior to, so that we would have had this stuff ready. We didn't see it coming, we didn't know that we were getting these funds. And now it's very much rushed, and these have to be expended, um, and everything by December thirtieth is our deadline. But the deadline's up earlier because of the, the city's deadlines on, on the finance side.
Thank you. Anything else?
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, pass ordinance twenty twenty dash seventy-seven.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Dr. Felner, second by Mr. Ivy, suspend the rules, uh, roll call.
No, that was to pass.
That's to pass, because we borrowed the other, okay, to pass this ordinance.
Yeah.
Uh, roll call.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance twenty twenty day seventy-seven has passed also. I'd like to take this opportunity to really thank Eunice, April, Julie, everybody else that, uh, had a hand in this uh, urgency, uh, I know you put extra effort to this, and appreciate it, and also to the council for all seven uh, being in attendance today for this special meeting, which was great.
Very thankful.
Uh, thank you, thank you to all of you, and since this is a special meeting, there won't be any other business, so do you have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Mr. Triplett made the motion, second by Mrs. Earleston, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed likewise, meeting hereby adjourned at, what, four?
Four forty-one, four forty-one.
Forty-one, okay, thank you all for coming, have a nice weekend.
Good weekend, everybody. Thank you.